My name is Carol Pelchat. I'm the Voter Service Director for the League of Women Voters of Greater Haverhill, and I want to welcome you all here this evening, particularly the candidates. I know that their lives have been extremely busy over the past few months, so to take the time out to answer questions and let them know what their thoughts are on your questions is great. I want to first, to let you know that we've got two of our, because I don't want to do it later, we have two of our candidates for City Council who will not be coming here this evening. Mr. Bevel Aqua has an event that he has been planning since the beginning of January, and his guest is the governor.[45.51][45.51](Laughter) And I don't think you're supposed to not go for him. So, and then, Mr. --
Mr. Hart.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Hart.
Mr. Hart. It was also, but he had indicated, and these gentlemen both spoke to me way back in the end of August when we first contacted them, that they would not be able to be here. But they do have their bios in the candidate information form. We have quite a few of them in the back table, so if you need them. And by the way, if any of you folk are not registered to vote, we have some people here at the back table who will get you registered so you can vote in the municipal election, assuming you're going to be 18 by then. So, I'm going to turn this over now to our moderator, Ms. Rebecca Bachmann. She is a member of the Andover, North Andover League. One of the rules for the, for league debates is that you cannot have someone moderating who can vote for any of the candidates, and she has very graciously come over here from North Andover to help us out this evening. So, welcome Becky.[118.57][118.57](Applause)
Thank you very much, Carol, and welcome to Candidates Night. Tonight is a chance for you to get to know the people who want to represent you on the School Committee and as City Councilors. Before we begin, please be sure to silence your cellphones and beepers, and as in all league forums, please hold all applause until all candidates for School Committee, then all candidates for City Council have completed answering their questions and made their closing statements. If you've not already submitted a question and wish to do so, please write your questions on the cards you've been given and pass it to the aisle. Please understand that because of time constraints, a limited number of questions can be asked, so your specific question may be combined or modified for clarity. In addition to questions collected in this room, the league has asked in advance for questions from the public, which will also be used.
Including the schools, though?
Including students from the school. Questions have been provided by them. The format tonight, and this is important for the candidates, is that you will have up to one and a half minutes to respond to an opening question, which you've already been provided and which I will restate. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question, and each candidate will have one minute to make a closing statement. In the interest of covering as many questions as possible, there'll be no rebuttal time. You may notice that I ask a follow-up question if it seems appropriate. Also, I'll make every effort to alter who is the first to answer a question, so the same candidate will not always go first. Candidates, please note that there is a timer seated in the front row. You'll see a card stating that you have a minute left when it's the minute and a half question, and that when you have 30 seconds left. Because we have a short time to hear from each of you, I may nicely cut you off if you go beyond your time. We'll start with the School Committee, which consists of six members, who each serve a four-year term. This year, three candidates will be elected. Two incumbents are running. The candidates are seated in the order in which their names will appear on the ballot. It's my understanding that the ballot order is determined by the requirements of the city charter. I'm not going to be reading the bios of these candidates, because they're available, a limited number of the bios are available in the room, and they are also available on the league website. So, the candidates are Pamela Conti, Gail Sullivan, Scott Wood, who is incumbent and the current president of the School Committee, Sean Tuohy, who is the incumbent, Michael Sherman, and Sven Amirian?
Amirian.
Amirian. Okay, thank you. So, let's get started. The first question, which again, the School Committee was provided with in advance, is please tell us briefly why you are interested in serving on the School Committee, and what prior experience you have working with civic, community, and/or governmental organizations. Ms. Conti, we'll start with you, and you have a minute and a half.
Hi, I'm Pam Conti, and I'm happy to be here. Is it any better? Okay. I'm presently working at Sacred Hearts Parish in Bradford, Massachusetts, and through that I have also been associated with the Hunger Round Table and the Interfaith Network of Caring, and run the Betsy Conti Food Drive. I've worked, I'm sorry, is that me? I volunteer with Boy Scouts, with Girl Scouts, and I have volunteered at my children's school with many organizations. Prior to that, I've worked in the banking industry and worked for the family business.
Okay, is that it?
Not everything, but...
All right, thank you. But why are you interested in serving on the School Committee?
I think that I've lived a life of service, I'd say initially through maybe my mother-in-law, who was a City Councilor, and I think she taught me that when I moved to Haverhill, to serve the community. And I've enjoyed serving it through different organizations, such as the American Cancer Society, the Food Drives, the Hunger Round Table INC., as well as through scouting and offering different opportunities to children for their growth. So, I feel I have a spirit of service.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Hi, I'm Gail Sullivan, and the reason that I am running for School Committee is because I was brought up by two teachers. My dad was first-generation American, his parents came from Ireland, and they taught me that a good education levels the playing field for everybody, that the only way that everyone, no matter what neighborhood they come from, what their ethnicity is, how much money they have, the road for everybody is education. I am passionate about education, I've devoted my life to it. I came here in 1974 to be a teacher at Whittier. I stayed there for 14 years, and then I left, and I became an assistant principal, and then a principal, and then a curriculum director, and assistant superintendent. So, I have lots of experience with curriculum, instruction, special ed, and budgeting. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. My name's Scott Wood. I'm a fifth-generation lifelong Haverhill resident and graduate of the Haverhill Public Schools. I'm the current president of the Haverhill School Committee and candidate for reelection. I hold an associate's degree in criminal justice from Fisher College, a bachelor's in public administration from Fisher College, and a candidate for my MBA from Pittsburgh State University. I have spent my entire life, adult life, serving the city of Haverhill. When I graduated Haverhill High School, I went to work as a custodian in the school system to help pay for college. At 19, I ran for a seat on the Haverhill School Committee and won, becoming the youngest elected official in Haverhill's history. I am now finishing my third term as a member of the Haverhill School Committee. I also serve as a School Committee member for Whittier Regional Vote Tech. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Haverhill Boys and Girls Club, and a Board of Directors member for the Greater Haverhill Newbury Port Arc, which serves adults and children with developmental disabilities. I have also served as a YMCA youth basketball coach, and served on both the Haverhill High School Building Committee and the Hunking School Building Committee. I have a passion for public service, it's what I've done ever since I graduated high school. I'm hoping to continue that. I look forward to discussing our records tonight and the future of the public schools with you here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tuohy?
Thank you. Again, my name is Sean Tuohy, candidate for reelection for the Haverhill School Committee. I first want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum this evening. I also want to thank my opponents for sharing this forum as well here tonight. I've been married for over 17 years to my wonderful wife, Tatum, and we have two terrific children who actually attend Haverhill Public Schools, and that's the main focus why I continue to run, because I feel that I have a vested interest in education, and more importantly, in all of our children. With that being said, I want to provide a robust educational climate for all of our children, so that we can, they can attend the college of their choice and be ready for the 21st century global economy. I do feel that our district is moving in the right direction. Through myself and my colleagues over the years, have accomplished a great many things over the last three terms. Lowering class size, we have a new school over at Hunking being built as we speak, but there's work to be done. I feel my experience and my background will allow me to continue to be an effective member of the School Committee. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, my name is Michael Sherman. I've been a Haverhill resident for three years now. I grew up in Brockton, Mass., and I was on this, I was not on the School Committee, but I was a liaison from the School Committee to the students, to let the students know what's going on in the School Committee. I also have been a CYO coach in basketball, baseball, hockey, football. I enjoy working with the children. The children are going to be our next senators, our next presidents, our next doctors, our next lawyers. They need a solid education to do that. I believe with the changes that can be done in the school system, the school system will get stronger as they have in the past, but stronger for the future. And that's my head.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Amirian?
I'd like to thank the league for having this debate tonight. I think it's a very important thing that we have debates, so that citizens get an idea of the candidates they're considering, and I wish more people would attend these events. My name is Sven Amirian. I'm a former City Councilor. I was elected twice to that position. I served for three years, at which point I stepped down to become the president of the Greater Haverhill Chamber of Commerce, where I served for two years. And that experience gave me a lot of budgetary knowledge and knowledge of municipal government, which will help me in my endeavor to become a School Committee member. I've also been a Haverhill youth soccer coach for five years. I've coached floor hockey, basketball. I am an assistant scout master with PAC 24, Troop 24 now, and my son has just moved from Cub Scouts to Boy Scouts. I've served as the treasurer for the Winnie Kinning Foundation, and I've always looked to serve and give back to the community, and I feel that I've done that all through my life. And my kids are now the fifth generation, they grew up in the same house that my great-grandfather purchased back in the 1920s, so I too have a vested interest. My children also attend a public charter school here in Haverhill. I have three children, and soon they will be going to high school, three years, and that's why I want to be a School Committee member. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, you'll have a minute to answer, so you're going to have to talk kind of fast, because we are asking you to please identify what you consider to be the major challenges facing the school system, and how do you recommend that these challenges be addressed? Ms. Sullivan, please.
I think the major challenge is to improve the academic achievement of the district. The high school that we're in is a Level III high school. Tilton is Level III. Almost 45% of the students are not proficient in the area of reading. I think it's really important to overcome that, because reading is fundamental in everything that you do. I also think that improving the dropout rate at the high school is extremely important, and that's a real challenge. It's currently 13 to 14%, and I'm very concerned about what happens to those 13 to 14% of the students who drop out.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I also agree that academic achievement is the goal of all of us, we're in the business of educating students, and academic performance must be at the forefront of everything that we do. We have made great strides in a lot of our buildings, we now have four Level I schools in the district. We have made multiple changes in curriculum, however, it takes a number of years for those changes to actually, they don't happen overnight when you change your curriculum series and how you're doing things. I agree the dropout rate is a very serious issue for us. It's why we've expanded the program here at Haverhill High School, that houses roughly, I asked yesterday, I believe almost 30 children, which would be dropout if we didn't have this program, it was nearly cut a couple of years ago, however, we've since expanded it. And the dropout rate is, the dropout rate according to DESI is 5.2%, so I'm not sure where the 14% number came from. However, the dropout rate has gone down, started at 5.8% four years ago, and it is today at 5.2%. And we have expanded the programs for children after school to keep them here. Thank you.
Mr. Tuohy?
Thank you. I'll speak as fast as I can, but I do agree that dropout is certainly a challenge, but we have actually, that number has been reduced, as Mr. Wood has indicated. I believe in addition to that, special education challenges pose a great budget buster, not only that's unique to Haverhill, but throughout the Commonwealth. I would like to see, I mean, circuit breaker reimbursement, it should be, usually requires, reads rather, that it's 75% reimbursement, however, over the years, we've seen that as low as 42% from the previous year being funded. So, that in itself is one area that I'd like to see, that we need to focus more of our efforts there quite a bit. Student achievement, obviously, is a critical component, and attracting and retaining quality teachers, going back to student achievement, is critical. We've just solved the contract, we've negotiated, we ratified that contract, which we're very happy to announce, as you all may know. We need to continue to provide the necessary resources, because having two children, myself and the Haverhill Public Schools, it's extremely important to have the right teachers in front of our children. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, my biggest issue, one of them right now, is English as a second language. One out of five students in the United States speak English. That's a problem. I'd like to see if we can take the top 5% of the English as a second language class, emerge them into English classes, speaking it classes, because they need to learn English. You want to talk your normal, can't think of a word, your normal, like Greek or Italian, you want to speak your native language, that's fine, but you can't go to a bank and speak Italian and say, "I want a loan." You need to speak English to tell them you want a loan. I find that very important, that English is a second language, has been evolved around the students that need it, and I'd like to see it grow even more and more.
Mr. Amirian?
I think there are a number of issues that are very important. One of the ones that I'd really like to address is, I think the lack of respect that we show our teachers. We've been far too long without a contract for our teachers. The teachers are the front line of the defense of our children and the education of our children, and without them and their wholehearted support, we're doomed for failure as a school system. The teachers have operated now without a contract. I'm happy to see that that is forthcoming, but I think that we need to do something to change the culture of disrespect that we have shown. The kids are our first priority, and the teachers are that first line of defense with our students. So, that's what I'd like to focus on. I'd also like to focus on taking a closer look at the budget. Mr. Tuohy mentioned the special education funding issue. That's one of my areas of focus that I would like to start that conversation with our state delegation. Thank you.
Ms. Conti?
I'd like to start by thanking the teachers and the administrators of Haverhill. My children had a very, very good experience in the Haverhill Public School System. Not perfect, there were ups and downs, but they've had some absolutely wonderful, wonderful teachers, and I want to thank them. And I think we should thank them, too. I know that the teachers work very hard to make this school system very, very good. There are deficiencies and there are challenges in the school system. How do you help children who aren't interested in learning? How do you motivate them? What kind of programs do we offer to motivate kids who don't seem to be motivated? I think maybe going to the students themselves, sometimes peers can give us ideas that we don't see right off the bat. I think we should also consider families and families' needs. Many families need after-school care, and it's very difficult for them to get their children from school to an after-care program, or to help them with their homework. Okay, sorry, time's up.
Thank you. The next question, you'll have one minute to answer. Do you agree or disagree with lifting the cap on charter schools? Why or why not? Mr. Wood?
Are you talking about the public or private charter schools?
The charter schools, I'm sure that are funded through the school budget.
The charter schools, I do agree with, for a public charter school, I do agree with lifting the cap. I believe that parents should have choice. Now, having said that, it is much more difficult as a School Committee member to balance the budget, it's a significant expense that we have. The Montessori school is quite different than the Silver Hill public charter school that we have. So, if we were doing it as similar to the Silver Hill way, I would support doing more of those in the district.
Mr. Tuohy?
Thank you. I also support lifting the cap. I think part of NCLB, you know, has driven a wave across this country to give parents, most importantly, the choice as an alternative if they need be. The challenges that we face in this area in particular is that unfortunately, it pits one group against another because of the funding mechanism there, but I certainly support lifting the cap and giving parents the choice for their children.
Mr. Sherman?
I'm also agreeing with Mr. Tuohy about lifting the cap and giving the parents of the school, kids, where they want to go. I think it's important, because there are schools that work, and the teachers themselves control and work hard with the students, lifting the cap, and also having the right to choose the school. And some of the schools work better as an MCAS, and some of them don't. But that's why we're giving the teachers, I'm sorry, the students and the parents the right to find out what schools are where, and how do they want to work with them if they get into the school system charter.
Mr. Amirian?
Thank you. This is a question that strikes close to home. All three of my children attend the Hillview Montessori Public Charter School. My wife and I made a choice early on that we fully endorsed the Montessori method, and I myself was a product of the Merrimack Montessori Kindergarten Program. The charter schools provide a wonderful alternative, and also a model that elements can be taken from and used in a traditional public school setting, so I'm very much in favor of lifting the caps, and I would like to see a better program where the funds don't flow into the school system and then out to fund those public charter schools, rather go directly to the schools themselves. Thank you.
Ms. Conti?
One thing I think that every student who attends a charter school shares in common is a parent who sat down and made a choice, who went out to advocate for their child, to try to find them a place to receive an education that they felt would best suit that child. I would like to see us offer these choices within the school, but I would also like to see us encourage more parents to become involved in their child's education. I think too many of our parents aren't a part of their child's education, many are, very many are, but many of the children who are failing in our schools have parents who maybe work two jobs and don't have the time, and maybe we can put together programs to help these families and these children to get ahead. And if it takes a charter school to do that, then maybe that's the way we should go.
Ms. Sullivan?
I think we have a sufficient number of charter schools right now, although I have, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable with this question, because I don't know what the data is about why we would need more. I'd like to see that first. I also would like to see regular public schools doing what charter schools do, that make parents like them so much. You have close attention paid to a child's education, you have communication with the school. I don't see why we can't replicate those things in our other schools, if that's what we decide to do, and as a School Committee member, if elected, that's what I would encourage and support.
Thank you all. The next question is, and maybe this can be short, and you can just do a very quick explanation of why or why not. Do you think a course in civics should be a requirement for graduation? You'll have up to a minute. Mr. Tuohy?
This question was posed before. This comes up debate after debate, and I believe it should. I think it's important to understand the history, and so I do support it. It's a short answer I'm going to give you. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
I'm also with Mr. Tuohy. I do believe that the civics classes are important to the students. They need to learn about history in itself, but also about the governments, federal government, state government, and local government. And I do believe that the civics classes will teach them what they need to know. Thank you.
Mr. Amirian?
I'd have to say yes, I believe that they should be required, but I'd like to study that argument a little more. I haven't seen, you know, either side of the debate, and, you know, before I weigh in definitively, I would study this issue and hear both sides as to why or why not it should be required, but tentative yes at this point.
Ms. Conti?
I think as citizens, we all have a civic responsibility, and I think teaching our young adults to have a civic responsibility is extremely important. Whether we do it as a separate class, or whether we can incorporate it into American history, I don't know that you would have enough time to include it in American history and study American history as well. I came from, I was raised in a program where we did have separate civic classes, and I think I benefited greatly.
Ms. Sullivan?
I think it's absolutely imperative to have a course in civics. I teach at Northern Essex, and I'm shocked at my students' lack of understanding of how laws are passed, of how the separate levels of government work. They don't understand how the three branches of government are supposed to balance one another out. They are disempowered because they don't know enough to participate, and they also feel that they shouldn't participate because it won't make any difference, and I think a civics course would empower them and teach them how they can be engaged and make a difference in their community. So, I absolutely support it.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you, absolutely, without question. I would support it. When you go out and campaign, knock on doors, and talk to people, it's unbelievable how many people really don't understand the role of a School Committee, a City Council, what specifically a mayor does, what's a city responsibility versus state responsibility versus federal responsibility. I absolutely believe that it should be a requirement. I think far too many people don't understand the difference. I know it's not the case with Mr. Jordan's class, they all understand the difference, but I think far too many don't, and we absolutely should make it a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be a minute. What programs are currently offered to educate the students on the dangers of drug abuse, and how do you think these can be improved? Mr. Sherman?
I personally feel that the DRS officers need to get involved more, especially because of the opium epidemic with heroin. A lot of people take it, and they get hot doses, and they die. And I think that the students at a sixth or seventh or eighth grade level would be able to understand when a DRS officer talked about heroin, marijuana, uppers, downers. They need that information so they don't get involved with it. So, as long as you have your DRS officers, that's their job, that's their duty, and So as long as you have your D.R. officers, that's their job, that's their duty, and I'd like to see them get into the school system at every level. Thank you.
Mr. Amirian.
I understand that, you know, we address these, these issues in health classes, but I, I don't believe we do enough. I think we need to take a comprehensive look at our, at our whole program and evaluate when we introduce this very difficult topic. If we don't get to our kids at an early age and educate them about the dangers of, of drug use and drug addiction, we stand the chance of losing them before we've even made our first contact. So I think we need to fundamentally change the way we look at drugs in our culture. You know, no longer is it, is it something, you know, that only inner cities experience. I mean, this is in, you know, middle America, I mean, it's, it's through middle, you know, middle-class America. And so an extensive review of our entire education policy is necessary.
Ms. Conti.
I do believe that our public school systems begin addressing drug issues with children at a very young age. They do begin in the elementary level. And I believe that there is a need for that because unfortunately, many young children are being raised in households where that is a part of their regular life, unfortunately. Maybe what we need to offer some of these children is an opportunity to express what they're experiencing at home and empower them with some sort of help. I do not know how a young child can face that type of an issue. I think it's overwhelming for them and I would like to see us give some kind of support to younger children. And to older children, perhaps more of a mentoring program, peers, somebody that they can share with and that they, they can talk to, somebody they feel comfortable with to explain the situation that they're going with and help them get help somewhere else.
Ms. Sullivan.
Certainly, health education in schools is extremely important to teach children to respect themselves, respect their own bodies, respect one another. But I think beyond that, schools have to build strong relationships with other institutions because schools alone cannot prevent drug use. That's not realistic. We, schools should be partnered with churches, with community organization and with parents so that parents don't feel like they're out there all by themselves dealing with this terrible issue. We should have partnerships and collaboration so that the whole community is working to solve this problem, not just schools.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you, and I'm glad you asked this question. When this issue come up, I actually brought this issue up roughly 10 years ago, before it was a hot topic issue. And when this issue really came up, I, I brought forth a comprehensive plan to the school committee which brought a, a review of the entire health curriculum, which now for the first time, we offer addiction courses, which we've never had in the past. We also brought in speakers to every one of our middle schools and the high school this time. Again, something we haven't done in the past. We do use school resources, the D.R. program really doesn't exist anymore. It's now a school resource officer program and they, they run a different program now. But they do come into our classes and they do teach the kids about the dangers of gangs, drugs, et cetera, in the streets. And lastly, for the first time ever, Haverhill has an addiction and recovery specialist here available where parents can call, where concerned friends can call, and that is a great community resource and we have some good numbers on that. So I think it is a problem and I think we do have a plan for it and we're trying to work towards that. Thank you.
Mr. Tuohy.
Thank you. I think Mr. Wood stole some of the thunder here and I want to do, I do want to commend him for his, his due diligence on this particular issue. As mentioned, hiring the specialist, Ms. Mayor, I think has been a wonderful addition to the district. But I, as a parent, I always go back and look at how challenging it is as, as a parent to have those, that communication and dialogue with your kids, which, which my wife and I had. So I believe we need to do a better job as involving, having more parental involvement and address this issue because in my opinion, it really starts at home. We can only do so much, which we have, but again, we need to do a better job of educating and assisting in getting more parental involvement to execute this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next question, you'll have a minute. How can Haverhill attract and keep the best teachers? Mr. Amirian.
Well, first we have to pay them. We, we've had a problem with that in the past. We're, as compared to our neighboring communities, we're offering some of the lowest salaries to teachers in the area and that's a problem. I realize that we've got a budget that we are constrained by and that, you know, the money that's in that budget is, is not necessarily allocated for teacher raises. However, without the ability to, to recruit teachers through financial compensation, we're not going to, we're not going to attract and keep those teachers. And again, this goes back to my, my comment about respect and, you know, fostering the, the culture of appreciation that needs to happen. In addition to, you know, compensating them financially, we also have to compensate teachers and give them the support that they need so that they feel respected and, and valued within the school system. Thank you.
Ms. Conti.
It's definitely true that we need to respect our teachers and we have lost some very wonderful teachers here that were part of the Haverhill school system. And perhaps if it's possible, when somebody does leave, ask them why they leave, find out what's pulling them away. Obviously, money is always a big issue. People can go elsewhere, they can get more money, but let's ask the teachers that are still here, why are you staying? And I think you'll find that we have a dedicated group of people who are from the area, who are dedicated to Haverhill and want to make Haverhill a better place. And I think we need to support them in whatever way we can to keep them here.
Ms. Sullivan.
Certainly, we have to pay teachers well if we're going to keep them and attract them. In the next three or four years, I think the district is about to lose about 200 teachers who will become the right age to retire. So this is a big concern. I think the teachers want flexibility, they want job satisfaction, they want to be supported. Half of all teachers in the United States leave after their first five years because they're discouraged. And so knowing that, we should have a really excellent mentoring program for new teachers so they know what they're doing, they're supported and they get help when they need it.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Money's the easy answer to this question, but it's, it's not an accurate statement that we are the lowest in the area. On some levels, we are and on some levels, we are the contracts in multiple steps. So to say that we're one of the lowest is simply not factually correct. And our retention rate is much higher than the state retention rate. We have over a 90% retention rate. The state runs at about 86% retention rate. So we do do a better job than the state of Massachusetts on retention. But money is one aspect, but respect is a bigger aspect of it. And it's respecting the work that the teachers do in the classroom, not micromanaging the teacher in the classroom, giving them the resources they need to succeed. So yes, everybody wants to be paid more, but in, a lot of times, respect means a lot to teachers in helping retain them.
Mr. Tuohy.
Thank you. It's, it's not only just about money. And I've heard this dialogue for quite some time about not respecting, if we don't pay what's requested, that we're not respecting teachers. That's just not the case. And I actually take issue with that because again, I use, I've been saying it all night, having two children in the Haverhill public school system, I actually believe in the teachers. We have great teachers in this community, in front of my kids, in front of all of our children, and that's why my kids, and I choose my, for my children to attend Haverhill public schools because they're the, one of the best in the area. And as far as attrition, turnover, it's what Mr. Wood just said. We're below the state, you know, as far as losing, that number's not accurate. We're retaining, we need to do a better job for sure, but make no mistake about it, our teachers are being, are dealt with accordingly and equitable and we need to be fiscally prudent with the taxpayers at Haverhill. I'd love nothing more to give them everything that they want, but it's just not fiscally prudent and it's just not a reality. With that being said, we have the, one of the best teachers in the Merrimack Valley and I'm proud to have my children attend Haverhill public schools.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes, I believe that salary is important to keep your teachers, retention, it is. But I'd also like to see workshops for the teachers of what they, what they study for the students to get them more education, to pass it along to the students. I don't think it would be that feasible, is that the word I'm looking for? Unfeasible because they need, they, the teachers need to get better and better and better and that's why they're going to stay in the Haverhill school system. Like Mr. Wood said, the retention rate is excellent and I think if we keep giving the teachers what they want, which is the hardest thing in the world because of the budget, we're going to retain as many more as we can. And we also are going to need to hire young students like out of Bridgewater State College. It's a major college for teaching. They get the certificates, they're ready to come out and teach whatever school system they can get their resume to.
Thank you very much. The next question will be a minute. I hope you can answer it that quickly. How can special education be more flexible so that budget overruns will not cause a major financial crisis? Ms. Conti.
Could you state that again?
How can special education be made more flexible so that budget overruns will not cause a major financial crisis?
I would have to say I'm not totally equipped to answer that question. I do not know how the special education system is set up in Haverhill. I'm very limited in my knowledge of how that is in this area. I know that my children did have special needs and I would say my experience is limited only to their experiences. Mostly, I would, I would say I'd need to look at it. I think we should evaluate what's there and work together to try to make it better. I'm sorry, I'm really not.
Ms. Sullivan.
Well, one serious issue in special education is that students don't get out of special education. The goal should be to help students be independent so that they can go off and have a career and go to college and be successful. And we should be giving them the strategies to do that. So if we did a better job with that, we'd have students leaving special ed and that would lower costs. The other thing is, we should collaborate with districts around us. What services are we providing that we could have a cooperative agreement with districts around us? We spend over $12 million on out-of-district placements. What if we could bring students back home if we were offering those programs in-house in collaboration with other districts? There are many ways you can collaborate to improve your flexibility with special education.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I'm not sure there's an easy way to be flexible on, on the law that mandates it, but there are some things that I think that we can do. I think as Ms. Sullivan said, we should look to always be evaluating students who are on IEPs. Do they still belong on it or can we integrate them out of the special education program? Secondly, I think we should bring some of the services that we currently have back to the system. In the, in the long run, it will be a savings. We are at the mercy of many of the private companies that provide services such as services for the deaf and the blind. We can affect those tuition rates. However, if we brought some of those back, we could have more cost control mechanisms. I think we could also need to have a stricter residency enforcement policy, stricter. We should really have a strong residency enforcement policy, much like Methuen did where they saved $1.4 million by having a residency enforcement policy. So I think if we looked into some of those things, it would certainly save us some money, some short-term savings, some long-term savings. Thank you.
Mr. Tuohy.
Thank you. We are limited as far as flexibility, there's no question about it, but there was, we hired, there was a consultant that did some work for us years ago and, you know, mentioned about having a beginning, a middle and an end relative to IEP. So Ms. Sullivan's statement is actually, actually correct. There is some savings by weaning them off and educating, but that really requires, quite frankly, to have continuity and consistency at the top, which we, which we're, we've struggled a little bit with and we need to do a better job in having the special, a special education director that's, that's here for the long haul, that understands to keep kids and works very hard to provide the necessary service to keep kids in district versus sending them out. I think the teach and program and also the, the ALP program down at the St. James Building is, is a tremendous asset. And again, going back to the circuit breaker reimbursement, we need to certainly have a serious dialogue with our legislative delegation to see what we can do and what they can do to help increase the reimbursement on, on reimbursement. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes, well, unfortunately, I'm not using this as an excuse, I am handicapped. I don't consider myself physically handicapped, I consider myself physically challenged. I used to work for a bus company in Bridgewater and I would have to pick up schoolchildren in wheelchairs and bring them to a school in Canton, where they lived, where they were able to swim, exercise, gym, radio station and regular classes. We need to be able to understand the private schools and have a way to better our special need system, to get those children back into our school system where they belong. Thank you.
Mr. Amirian.
While I believe there are some internal adjustments that we, that we can make to free up some, some budget space and address these special ed concerns, this is really a conversation we need to be having at the state level. We only get, you know, 75% reimbursement from, from the state and it comes a year later. So while, you know, the school department is forced to pay out of pocket at the time that the services are needed for special education students. And this is, this is a budget buster. It's impossible to plan a budget when you can have two or three students from out of district come in and require several hundred thousand dollars of specialized education. And oftentimes, this isn't education-related expenses, it's, it's medical expenses. I mean, just, just to, to keep these kids at a level, you know, nursing care and, and one-on-one care. It's not fair to the rest of our population to burden them, our student population, to burden them with, with the needs of just a few students. So wholesale reforms needed.
Thank you. We're going to do one more question. This is probably a shorter one and maybe 30 seconds. If you really need a minute, we'll do that. And then we'll be moving to closing statements. Okay? What do you think is the best mix of educators to non-educators on the school committee and why? Mr. Wood, or Ms. Sullivan, we're going to start with you.
I don't think there is any formula for that. I think it's very dependent on the individuals. I'm an educator, I'm not a politician, but that doesn't mean I'm any better than anybody else. I have a lot of information, but I think it depends on the individual's intelligence and their character and their willingness to serve and why are they serving. So I don't think there is a magic formula.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I, I don't think there's a ratio that's the perfect ratio that works. I've served with good members that come from the private industry, good members that have been former educators. I've served with former educators that I didn't think were good members because they had biases from some of their years in the school system intended to favor those people that they had friendships with. And same with some non-school. So I don't, I don't think there's an easy answer to that question, nor is there an easy formula for it.
Mr. Tuohy.
Anybody that, that wants to serve and is committed and passionate and wants, and wants to serve would be a good fit for any, for any office. And that's the shortest answer I'm going to give you.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
And could you please make sure you're speaking into the mic? People are having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not in the education business. I was an autotechnician for 13 years. I learned about students. I went to a voc tech school. It was hard to get into the school. To get into that school, you had to take an interview. After the interview, they decided if you were going to go to the school. As I was told by one of the principals, they told me this. They said, "Michael, this school's a business and the business is to learn. If you don't want to be here and learn, there's a whole line of kids that want to come in and take your place." Well, that snapped me into, that brought me into college. I was happy to go to college. I have an associate's degree in political science, but I'm not a educator. I am from public or private sector and I think some of the things that I can think of will entice the school committee to take of will entice the school committee to take a better look at these.
Thank you. Mr. Amirian?
I don't think there's an exact ratio that you can say is the, is the best mix, but I definitely believe that there should be at least some representation from, from educators on the school committee. I'd like to see some teachers, I'd like to see some, some people from, from the administration. I think Ms. Sullivan brings the full package. She's, she's got a wonderful resume, and I'd like to see more people like that throw their hat in the ring. And it provides balance, and it also provides, you know, a basis for making decisions that people who have no educational experience don't have. So it's essential that we have at least one or two, maybe a 50-50 mix is really where we should be looking at. Thank you.
Ms. Conti?
I think it's important to bring people onto the school committee who have experience, experience in many different areas. Education, parenting, service to the community. And I think if people can come onto the committee with the focus to serve the entire community to the best of their ability, and for that to be their major focus, I think that is the most important part of who we put on this committee.
Thank you all. It's time for your closing statements. You have up to a minute. And Mr. Wood, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this debate. Thank you to my opponents for taking part, and a special thank you to my family and friends for attending. This election should be about action, not words. When I took over as school committee president in January, I promised that one of my top priorities was ending the stalemate in teachers' negotiations. I'm proud to say, with the help of the members of the negotiating team, we settled a contract that was fair to teachers, students, and taxpayers. I worked hard, and I delivered results. When the substance abuse epidemic hit HAVR, I was proud to have taken the leadership role in that fight. We didn't waste time in talking or forming committees. We immediately put forward a plan that my colleagues supported and voted for. For the first time ever, we hired a treatment and recovery counselor. I went out and solicited private donations from the business community, which fund guest speakers at our middle school and high school. Lastly, for a total, we did a total evaluation of our health curriculum, which resulted in new courses for students on addiction. With the help of the city council, we funded a new health teacher.
And you're wrapping up, please?
I worked hard and delivered results. If I'm reelected, I make you this far.
Please wrap up.
I am.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wood.
I was trying to. I'll keep working hard and delivering results. It's been an honor of a lifetime to serve you, and I humbly ask for your vote on November 3rd.
Mr. Tully?
Thank you. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring the debate here tonight, as well as my opponents participating as well. It's been an exciting evening. We've, tonight, we've shared some ideas, we've learned more about each other. We've also learned that we care about our community, and are committed to building a stronger climate for education. I, as a, again, as a, being a father of two and having invested interest, I feel that I believe that my business experience combined with my 12 years of elected service will allow me to continue to have a positive impact on our educational system here in HAVR. I will work extremely hard, I will continue to do, do so, and provide the necessary resources so our children can compete in, or choose the college of their choice and compete in the global economy. I humbly ask for your support and vote Tuesday, November 3rd. Thank you so much for being here.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, um, one thing that wasn't talked about is bullying. Everybody forgot about that subject. And yes, it happens in class, it happens on the computer, but what happens if two children are walking home, or four children are walking home, and they're after that kid? In Brockton, we used to have a system, we worked with the Parent Teachers Association, and we put cardboard signs in houses of the shape of a woman. Those were safe houses, that if the kids had a run, they'd run to the safe house and knew they were going to be okay, whether that teacher, or mother, or father, or their own parents came and got them and brought them home. I think that's an issue that really needs to be looked at by the school committee. And so far, no one's really brought it about. That's the only thing I can really say that I'm for. I'm a conservative person, I'm not going to vote for the majority of what they're voting on. I need to take a look at the subject, invest in the subject, respect the subject before I make a vote. And I humbly report my issues to the public, and I appreciate the League of, the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Amirian?
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and giving us the opportunities to speak with you and to give us a little insight as to who we are and what we believe in. I'm really proud of my service in HAVR. I've been a city counselor for, elected twice, and it was a really enjoyable experience. I really miss that. And the year I took off between serving as the chamber president in my new position in the solar industry, I really, I really miss the connection that I had with my former colleagues. And I did a lot of thinking over that time, a lot of discussion with my wife and soul-searching about how best I could serve. And it really comes down to the kids. In the code of ethics in the, for the school committee, the primary objective is that we serve our kids, and that's what I want to do. In three years, my son will be graduating and be going to the HAVR high school, and that'll coincide with a four-year term for me, and my selfish interest is to give him the best he can possibly get, and by doing so, also give the best to all the kids of HAVR public school system. Thank you.
Ms. Conti?
Thank you. I think I come to this with a varied background. I have a degree in education, deaf education, secondary education, and social sciences. I have experience in the business world. I worked in banking for many years and held management positions. My family has a family business in the community in which I've worked, so I think I have an understanding where small business people take a part in our community. I have put two, two children through the HAVR public school system, and I have experienced it, but they have now both graduated. So I think I come into it with an experience of what's in the school system, but without a personal agenda, because I no longer have a child in the school system. I'm also getting to the point in my life where I'm reaching and looking towards retirement, so I think I have an understanding, a little bit of where maybe seniors are headed and their position on that. I offer you a varied background, and I hope to serve you well.
Ms. Sullivan?
I'm a passionate, persistent, committed person who just wants to use what I know about how to make excellent schools in service of HAVR. When I was canvassing for HAVR for hunking, and when I was working on River Ruckus, I've met hundreds of wonderful, wonderful people here who want the city to be fantastic, and I think that the only way to make it a premium city is to have an excellent school system. I'm also looking at my son, who's in the front row there, and he's going to get married in two months, and so hopefully, I'll be a grandparent within the next term of a school committee.
No pressure.
Thank you all very much, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve.